It being seven thirty, I will open this meeting. I will begin by reminding everyone that this meeting is being recorded. So. Don't have a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight. We do have a couple sets of minutes and. Which we could probably dispense of right off. We have four ZBAs. None of which to look to be too difficult. So. Perhaps. We should start out with motions. And Ryan, you have some motions for us for those meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Minnesota State of January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any changes or emissions? Hearing none, all in favor, please. Well, I gotta, I'm sorry, keep forgetting I get a roll call this thing. So. So how say you, Mr. Hayden?
I.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
And Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
And I am I as well. So if you would, please, Mr. Carroll.
Chairman, I move to approve the Minnesota State of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, do I have a second? Oh, second. Okay, seconded by Mr. Hayden. Any changes or omissions? Hearing none, Mr. Hayden, how say you?
Hi.
And Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
And Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
And myself as I, that's for in favor, no opposed. Okay. How about? If we talk about, if you could, for a couple of minutes, Danielle, this North Reading. So trail final feasibility report.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't put it on as its own agenda item, but I was sent the other day. By Phil Hertz, who from the Land Analization Committee, who's been working on this. He wanted to just. Send an update and just let us know where things stood. Their study, the work that they did with the town meeting appropriation from a couple of years ago. With the consultant, BSC Group. Is coming to an end or has come to an end. And they've published this. Report that has some, you know, several possible roots. So I think their goal is to get in front of the select board. At some point soon to discuss some issues relating to easements needed on private properties. Potentially on some of these routes, I think most of the routes. And then eventually to ask the town for funding. Or the next phase, which would be a design phase. So they could be eligible for the the Transportation Improvement Plan funds from the state. So. That's where I think that project stands right now. Just because, you know, Phil was kind enough to share that with me. I wanted to just share it with you. Just just so you knew what's happening. No requests from us.
Is there funds available already for that? Or do we have to apply for?
Um, so the funds that we had were just the town meeting funds for this study.
Right.
There are funds that are potentially available that Phil is looking into. For grant funding to help offset some of the cost of design. And then, once the design is at a certain percentage. The goal is to ask for the the project to be fully funded through the the TIP program. So, you know, with the major highway funding.
Right, right, right.
That's that's the goal. So.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Okay. Okay. We might as well look at a couple of these ZBAs. Everything that we don't have the other, our other doesn't think doesn't come up for eight o'clock.
Sure. Three forty Maine has been continued.
Okay. So forty Abbott Road. We don't have too much. We don't have much this.
Yeah, and I'm actually just seeing these applications today. I'm looking through the application form itself to see what this is the request for.
Wants to run a food truck catering business. Out of his house, so.
Oh, so home occupation.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't. I mean, I, I mean, it sounds okay. I mean, a lot of the times, these guys don't keep much food on the truck overnight.
Is he gonna? Where's he gonna? Garage it at his house?
Yeah, you can, you can have one commercial vehicle at his house.
Doesn't sound like he wants to do that. It's just to use the home office. The business isn't right. The.
Right.
Truck portion isn't even run out of there.
I don't, I don't, I would not, I would be surprised, Ryan, if he didn't keep the truck there. However, it is allowed, so. They like to get started early in the morning and go around to all the construction sites, you know, so.
This is he goes. Cater's lunch. But whatever.
Yeah. So any comments on this from anybody? Are we okay with that?
It's the standard.
Sounds like it fits in the four corners.
Yeah.
Right.
For home occupation. Okay.
Yeah, so. Twenty-eight Hollywood Terrace.
Pretty much the same thing.
Yeah.
States that'll just be the one one time truck too, so.
Yeah, yep. Yeah.
Okay. Say do not object as long as the home occupation by law is.
Yeah.
Right. That's what it's for.
All right, and then we have eleven Kings Row.
Two car garage. We got a plan, I think.
I'm sorry, can I tell you? It's a three car garage.
Three cars, huh?
Yeah, they called right to clarify. It wasn't done. It wasn't stated correctly in the application, apparently. So it's a three car garage.
Yeah, taking a little too long to load here. Yeah, yeah, screen shares.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz mine, I'm taking too long to download.
Sure.
I should have downloaded it earlier today, so.
It's not just a garage. It's also an addition above the garage. Yeah. So they're gonna make their house bigger.
There's also an elevation here. Which I can open. Oh, I see. It's a before and after. Okay. Okay, um, if you want me to go back to the plot plan portion. Okay, so existing garage to be removed proposed. Oh, I see where it's bumping out to the side there. Proposed thirty. By forty addition. Looks like the setback would go down to twenty point one feet. On the side.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it is kind of hard if you don't see what's right next door to the right there.
Yeah.
Do you want me to, I can.
So back to someone's house, I'll bet you.
Let me see.
Castle Road is right there.
All right, eleven Kings Row, so.
So developer followed one line, not the other line, huh?
Yeah.
Cuz it looks, it looks like the. The line on lot forty-five looks like it's pretty parallel to that. That's what happens when you don't have straight lines.
Yeah, I know.
Stop that now. Just trying to get back the image.
I got, I got it downloaded now, so.
Oh, I see it.
You see it? I can't get rid of the.
The top, the topos?
I, I don't, I don't really need the topos.
Come down and click on that little check mark there, Danielle. Click that one off. That's good enough. We don't need.
Okay, all right.
We don't need, we don't need to see the, just lines.
Okay, so where is the number? Eleven.
I think it's number nine. It would impact.
Slot forty-four. Does that help?
It should be highlighted. Do you see it highlighted?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
So I guess the garage would be built out toward the side, heading toward.
Oh, so it's, it's on that one.
Yeah. So they would have twenty-one, so that gets reduced to twenty-one feet, which is where it looks like it's more like. Twenty-four, seven closer to the front, but. But definitely looks like. No, that's. Twenty point one.
Twenty point one in the back. That's getting tight.
Yeah.
Yeah, existing is thirty seven, thirty-seven point eight. So it's basically cutting that. Existing setback in half.
Almost at half.
Yeah.
And I I was trying to look at at their, what their elevations, not elevations, but their floor plans. And. I don't know if I saw a floor plan for what they're gonna do with this. Let's see.
Yeah, it's in the.
First floor. Oh, yeah, they don't tell you what gonna do with the second floor, but it looks like an extra bathroom at least.
Probably a master suite.
Oh, yeah. Huge closets.
Yeah.
What's there now?
Well. Basically, it's up to the building department to make sure that it's, you know. That it's matches what exists for a septic system and all that. If they're gonna add. See, sometimes tall towns are different.
It's four bedrooms now. It's four bedrooms in that house.
I know, but but some towns. Cuz I run into it in a few different towns. Some towns. If you increase the square footage of the building by any amount. You automatically triggered, you know. An upgrade of a septic system or something. We got. Because. The, what's the total number of rooms in the house right now? If there's eight rooms in the house, this makes nine. Or if it's nine rooms in the house now, and this makes ten, then they would have to have a five bedroom. System. So I mean, there's, you know, but again, that's the building inspector should be making that decision.
Well, they got ten, yeah, they got ten rooms in this house now, Warren.
Yeah. So this is our, our, our job only is to decide whether or not we. Find something wrong. I mean, I don't see.
Cuz they're using a loft over the garage as it is. Right now.
Yeah. So I don't know. I mean, I I would. You know, I guess the question is, do they, you know, do they, do they need that third garage so bad that they need to take a, get a variance?
They don't need, I think the third garage just becomes there.
Yeah.
I think you could get away without the variance if you weren't adding the. Large second entrance between the garage and the existing home too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
I mean, my only objection to it is the reason is that they need a two car garage. So then now they've added an entrance in a three car garage.
Right. If the entrance wasn't there, you're right, you'd pull it back.
It's not really much of a hardship in my mind, and we just wonder whether. We should just be kind of granting variances without real cause here.
Yeah.
That said, it is a, it is a wooded. Sorry, sorry, Warren. It is a wooded separation from the butter. So I mean. The the real impact here is just that butter at number nine.
Yep.
Yeah, but how much woods go away when they put this house in? They're gonna cut down trees to put this in.
Well, it looks like the existing falls short of their current driveway setup. They have a basketball hoop off to the side there. And and if you see the, the overlay on the plot plan, it falls short of the existing driveway. So presumably, they could. You know, build this without, you know, cutting down any of those trees, but.
Right, right. Well, I mean, again, the hardship thing comes into play. We've had that discussion with the Board of Appeals for. Ever since I've been on this board.
Yep.
You know, is there a hardship here? Is there really a hard, some of the times. You know, people doing stuff not, there's no hardship. It's. It's just something that they want to do. And the zoning was there to protect the neighborhood, to provide. You know, buffers for everything. So every time they give a variance. Just cuz somebody wants to, it makes you wonder why bother having a zoning bylaw if. Just if you just ultimately got to let them build as close to as they want.
Yeah.
What's the point to the zoning bylaw?
But you know, Ryan, you're right. That's an eight foot entry. If that entry wasn't there, there would be no, no issue.
Yeah.
There'd be no issue. And since they don't tell us what they're gonna do with the the proposed second floor. They could be doing almost anything with that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you could certainly just say your hardship with a question mark. And leave it at that. I mean, they used to see in that from us, so.
There's, there's no hardship for 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 this anyways, so.
Yeah, it's no hardship.
The law doesn't give you a hardship.
All this does is is circumvent the building department, the zoning.
Yep.
By law.
Yep.
That's all it does. So if that's what they want to do, and the zoning Board of Appeals feels that there's enough of a hardship here for them. If they're, if if they just can't keep all their cars indoors the way they want to, then that's a hardship. You know, I mean, there you go.
Well, make the building smaller by taking out that entry, and then they won't have any problem. They can have their three car garage.
Well, you could probably. Go to the meeting and explain that to them, but. I think for the, for the, for our, for ours, for the sake of our discussion. I would, I would have to say that we just ask, where's the hardship?
Okay.
Yep.
Even at that. So. So.
What is three forty Main Street, Danielle? If I may.
That one came in a little while ago, but it's been continued a few times. I'm trying to remember what the issues were. There were some violations, I thought, maybe in appeal. Should probably take a look at the old application. They want to store. Material, let me see. Just going back to a previous folder.
Yeah, right now, this folder is empty, so.
Yeah, there's nothing in there.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't get anything new. I'm just trying to remember when it first came in. I think it was in the last.
That's the garage, that's the gas station down the end there.
Oh, yeah.
That's Payne's Paint. We used to be Payne's Garage down there. The landscaper has it now. And he wants to run his landscaping business out of there.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, you're right. I don't know why. This, this gave me the gas station right next to. Main and.
Oh, it's a special permit to run a construction landscaping business.
That's what I just said, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're right, Warren. I was.
I remember, I remembered.
Well, that's that one. And I guess if it's been continued, if you want to say anything more about it, you certainly can.
Yeah. I think the, I think there's been a number of requests to clean the place up cuz it was a little junky, but. And but in a landscaper, one would assume that a landscaper would try to make it look at least reasonably pretty. Since that, since we'd be doing more advertising for landscape, they'd have the place looks like a dump. You know?
You don't know what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
They, they, people don't go look at their sites.
Yeah, Kathy said something about it coming back maybe in April.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah. Well, I'm not sure why we, what was. I think your conservation issues there too, I think. I think there are wetlands close by and.
And you got bachelor pad behind it.
Yeah.
I think they wanted to put some big vehicles in there too. They were having trouble.
I don't recall any big vehicles, but I, but I know that site. Is a little, a little difficult. But I don't recall what, what do you, I know we heard a little bit about it, no, then it, then it went away, so.
Right.
So hopefully, they'll get it all squared away before they bring it back here, and we'll see how that goes.
J S A L L C. Who the heck is that?
Was that the group that bought it?
That's who owns it right now.
Yeah, yeah.
It's on our tax things. Jefferson Science Associates. Yeah, I don't think this is, this is the same. I think there is a a second JSA. Because the one I just found is. Is Thomas Jefferson Natural National Accelerator Facility.
Yeah, I don't think that's it. I don't think there's a neutron accelerator there.
No. Oh, it's a, looks like a construction company, maybe, Warren.
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah, then what they are is a landscape, calls themselves a landscape construction company. That's what they call themselves, as I recall.
Yeah, they had, I thought they had some pretty big equipment. That they were trying to fit in that lot.
Well, they could, they could have. I mean, they could have. A landscape construction, you know, could do anything to trees, tree work, or whatever. So they could have some good sized equipment, but. That's something that. The Board of Appeals would work on.
You would hope.
And and again, all we would, you know, again, but our only responsibility in that particular case would be to. Request that they, you know, that they meet the bylaws as far as.
Right.
A lot use and screening and, you know, fencing and all that stuff, so.
That's the first impression property for our town too.
Yeah, it's pretty bad right now.
Yeah.
It really is, I mean.
It has.
They've had a number of requests to clean it up from the building department in the past. But I think there was. I think there were multiple owners, and not everybody was involved in the actual use of the property, and it's all, so I think it was a cluster, so.
Yeah, it signifies, it signifies the difference between Andover and North Reading in one. Quick little, one quick little pass over the border.
Yeah, yeah. Well, then, all we can hope is that this landscape contractor makes it pretty because that's his advertising, so. We only hope. But we'll see, I guess. In a couple of months when they bring it all, when they bring it all back, so. Okay, so we actually have a few more minutes, Danielle. Do you have anything on. Planning administration updates or?
Just a couple announcements. Um, Warren and I spoke a little bit earlier today. Our, our CPC budget hearing. I was told was gonna be scheduled for March fourteenth. I know Warren is away that week, so I've asked if it can be on the twenty-eighth instead. Um, I haven't heard back yet, but I will let you know all the budget hearings are either the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth. So I'll let you know. Which of those it will be, if, for those of you who would like to attend. And on that same night, whatever night it happens to be, we're all going, also going to try to take care of the Economic Development Committee. Is in need of some joint appointments, and also. I was going to be speaking about the new MBTA Community Housing Requirements, which does impact North Reading. And we will probably have some zoning decisions to make about what sorts of changes we may or may not want to make, but. We, for now, in order to remain in compliance with what the state is asking communities to do, all we have to do is the Select Board is required to host a meeting. Having this on their agenda will qualify. I'll give a very brief presentation. It won't be long, just about what the expectation is and what the timeline is over the next, you know, few years, so. Stay tuned. That'll either be the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth. I'll let you know as as soon as, as soon as I do. And I did also want to mention just about our virtual versus in-person meetings. I had thought that the option for virtual meetings ended in April. It actually is, has been extended until July fifteenth, so. I don't know if you want to have this discussion now or later, if you want to think about it, but whatever you prefer to do is, is fine.
About it for a minute, but I'd also like to just mention that, can we move that? Does anybody have any opposition to moving that fifteenth meeting to the twenty-second?
Oh, great.
I don't.
Move our, our regular meeting from the fifteenth to the March twenty-second.
Yeah, is there anything on there, Danielle?
Not right now.
So I I I vote to move it.
Okay. Ryan, you okay with that? Okay, thank you, Jeremiah, Ryan. You're good, okay. All right, let's do that so that, you know, that way I can attend. I'll be, I'll be, I'll be back, so. So. Okay, so going back to the mask thing. What, you know, what's everybody think about that? I mean. The, the. I know Danielle's mixed feelings, and I know I do too about it. I mean, I I like the in-person thing. It's, I think you. I think you get more information traveling back and forth between people. It's easier for everybody to. Put their two cents worth in, if you will, but. But we usually get a lot more participation on Zoom. So it's a, it's a double edged sword.
Yeah. I think we do, but I think we're missing out on, on reviewing some stuff, especially with bigger, bigger plans and things.
Yeah.
You know, I, it it just, it makes it more difficult. When an engineer explains something. And they're sharing their screen. You can only see what he wants you to see. He doesn't, you don't get to see it. Big, and you can't look at something at the same time. So you're losing out on that. And I, I think that's, that's, that could hurt us in in the future.
All right, so you're in favor of going back to in person?
Yes.
Yeah, Ryan, what do you think?
Yeah, I'd say the same. I mean.
Yeah.
I'm pretty available on the timing. It's been a couple of years, so. If we wanted to wait a little bit longer until the weather warms up, and, you know, people are more assured that, that think that's reasonable, if everyone wants to go back immediately. I'm fine with that, too. I I agree with Chris. I mean, there's something being lost, but not having an in person. That said, we've done it for two years, so, you know, another month or two wouldn't kill anybody either, so.
Yeah, I said the same thing you did. I said, you know, in the cold weather, if we waited for it to get a little warmer, there would be, everybody'd be happy about it.
Yeah.
Well, how about, what do you, Jeremiah, how say you? What do you think?
Um, I think I'm a little uniquely positioned in the sense that I've got, you know, the. The young baby who's. Too young for the vaccine, so we're still very conservative. How we approach things around our house. But at the same time, I mean. Things are improving, and I I think that, once we're dealing with warmer weather. Things are improving and I I think that uh once we're dealing with warmer weather. The trends that go with the warmer weather. I probably won't give as much grief if I get, you know, if I go to a meeting.
We don't need you to have any grief, Jeremiah.
So what I was saying, what I so I was thinking about this and we and the a middle of the road approach would be, we'll have one more Zoom meeting. And then in April, we'll start with in person. Um, that gives everybody a chance to prepare for it, plenty of time to think about it and prepare for it, and also gives us a chance to check the landscape one more time before we take the plunge. What do you think?
That's fine with me.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would probably work that because we kind of Danielle and I kind of talked about that too, that kind of a timeframe. Give everybody a chance to uh be prepared and and. And set their home schedules and everything so that they can uh go back to in-person meeting, so. So we'll do one more Zoom. It'll be the twenty second and then the next meeting we do will be uh in April. And that will be an in-person meeting and. Well, well, Debbie probably has heard all this, so she'll make sure that's how it shows up. Um, should be good.
I'm just so looking forward to seeing all of you in person.
Yes.
That's you too, Debbie.
I'm not sure if you being.
You don't like seeing this one at a time, though?
Warren, you know me too well.
Yeah. All righty, good. Well, it's eight oh two, so that means that we can we can go carry. And uh which I won't think of. Okay, and I noticed we have a new name for Cranberry Meadows. So um right now, my understanding is that. Uh, D C I is uh in in the developer have uh come to an agreement on all of the issues that we had that were outstanding. So um, do we have anything that any presentation that needs to be done to further that or are we? Uh, did you have anything, Jill, that you wanted to bring in?
No, I mean, I think I uh Ms. McKnight and I um exchanged, God bless you. Um, we exchanged um documents because I know I have to do the supplementary restrictive, the statutory covenant. I delivered all of that to her. Um, the decision looked good. The conditions were reasonable as, you know, the the change. So I think it's like the second or third, right, Ms. McKnight? That we have with regard to the homeowner association and owning basically those um. Infrastructure elements in in those basins.
Yeah, the yeah, the drainage systems, yeah.
So that's all reflected. And we're done.
So you said, did you say they they the homeowner paperwork is not done or it is being done?
We will agree. Well, they don't exist yet, so we will um like create a homeowners association, which simply is. And the way I intend to do it, because it's it's only a contractual fiction. It's not like a condominium. So in the deeds, I'll make everybody obligated. That's how I plan on doing it. I suppose, you know what I could do? I didn't think of this. I could add it um to the supplementary restrictive covenant. You want me to do that? Like, I'll add a a provision about that and I'll pull it from the decision and download it in. You think I think that'll work?
I think that works well.
Yeah.
I like everyone has it.
Exactly.
Search for that property, it'll always come up. Um.
And I'll list because I know exactly what properties, the only ones that don't have onsite drainage. It are on two and three, only lots two and three. Everybody else has some form, either access or something.
So that means uh so that's uh uh a change that will be made as a result of tonight's meeting.
Yep.
A modification for us on tonight's meeting, and so the draft conditional approval will have that as a uh addition for tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just we'll just add that as a condition to add it in the supplementary.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I I did put some language in there about the um the homeowners association and also um the the town engineer and I had had a discussion today. Um, and there had been, um, you know, attorney man and I were in contact because um he just wanted to make sure that it was very clear because it's one thing to say that. Um, you know, the town won't maintain anything on private property, but he said, you know, there can be some gray areas for when um. You know, at at what point um does, you know, does that change? Does it change right at the property line? What if there's a pipe? So he had suggested that each of the manholes be available in the right of way at the property line so that the town could access it without entering onto private property, so. We straightened that out until it was to his satisfaction, so that is reflected in the draft.
And we are, I actually asked the um, you know, the the um. Engineer to put that on and then also to remember that he has to add a whole sheet with the conditions. So when you get the plans to review after, if if the board so chooses this evening. I'll then have the my laws deliver my laws delivered to you so you can review them as you always do. You know, have the manhole pushed out.
Yeah, so the of the the last thing I think to uh was if you recall, the the fire department wanted eighteen foot wide driveways.
Yep.
Yeah. However, however, I spent some time on the phone with him today. And um I told him that I was going to request twelve foot wide driveways. If we could all agree to at least um a minimum of twelve foot wide driveways. Um, that would give them the opportunity to get in around corners on things and and um. Uh, you know, because I I basically told him that we couldn't really begin to, you know, that'd be selective enforcement of a rule that doesn't exist, you know? And for the record, the um. The um requirement for eighteen foot wide roadways, which was in NFPA's, but it was actually taken out, so it doesn't even exist in the NFPA code anymore. Yeah, so um I I deal with on my one of my other companies, I deal with NFPA all the time, so I'm always reading stuff that they send. Even though it has nothing to do with what I'm doing. They send us everything. So anyway, um, so uh we had a we had a long discussion and I and uh. Apparently, I've continued trying to do that and it hasn't been successful yet, and he told me. That he'd stay in touch with them and if they got a bylaw that worked, he'd give it to us and then we can take a look at it and see if we want to add it into our subdivision control law. However. At this time, it does not exist, and I told him it would be a hardship because you'd have to go back to conservation because. Area, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know, and I I don't, I didn't think that was fair at all. And so um just to show me that we'll have a minimum of twelve foot wide driveways all the way along and I think all will be fine.
Do you want it? Would you like us to add it to the decision where the supplementary covenant?
I I think most of them probably already are, aren't they?
No, it doesn't. Well, I mean, they are on the plan, but we can add it if you want to say a minimum of twelve because there's nothing.
Yes, please, please do that.
So Danielle, I'll add those two things and I'll send them back to you.
Because I when I look, when I looked at it, it looked like everything was already there, except for a couple of places where I think it was just the way they drew it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll put it in writing so that you it it's, you know, part of the conditions.
Yeah, I just wanted to know that 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 got resolved, yes.
Yep.
Uh, one question for Danielle. In the uh in the conditions, Danielle, are we, I don't know how many functioning um drains there are in the street. There must be, there's gotta be a couple, I guess, right? Some dry wells. Um. Manholes that are functioning for water in the street.
I'm actually not sure.
I didn't I didn't know, I didn't notice if uh if we were setting those at at um.
Oh.
Binder grade. So that if there's a rain event. And we're not covering them, they're going to be active, so they need to be cleaned when you put, you know, at that when you handed the thing over. We had uh one of our car our developers. Had they put in the all the drains, but they're all at finished height. Plus, they had filter covers over them and we had a monster storm.
Yep.
And he flooded someone's house. When he builds it now, anything now after that, he put everything at binder grade and raised all the manholes because it was less expensive to do that. Than to pay off for the flooding claim and it's being a bad neighbor at that point also. I think he said it.
It's kind of. We have no problem doing that, but I I'm not, do you know how to write that, Danielle?
I think that's the standard procedure for construction in the stormwater and our stormwater rules, which this is gonna have to meet, so um.
All right, as long as it's.
Yeah.
If that's there, that's fine, Warren.
I um. I don't see, I don't see any, well, other than that particular situation, most of the time. Um, they've been aware that this needs to be done and and. And um and have have made sure that it happens, but I believe it's in stormwater, but. But it would be a very simple um uh Jill, it would be a very simple thing to say during uh during construction, all drainage structure will be at binder grade. Until final paving and that's. As simple.
Inoperative. Yeah.
An operational, yeah.
Right during, so that way when before we set the final, the stormwater management plan works, right?
Yes, that's right. That's correct. That's correct.
So if you get some kind of a catastrophic event, it handles it the way it's supposed to if it was done. And that way.
And we've had that happen.
Yeah.
We may have put that condition in, um, remember that other one we had done? Remember? Because we had this conversation, so I think I did that. I I'm remembering it too.
Okay, so you could put that in as uh.
I'll lift it. I'll get that.
Yeah, it just makes it makes a developer a good neighbor.
And they should be. I mean, I I.
Yeah, absolutely.
And and Dave is on the line, Dave Jameson. He agrees. He's a good neighbor.
I agree.
Well, we're just trying to make sure we cover all the bases so that things get done right, sorry.
Makes sense.
All right, good. So do we have anything else? Is that uh I think that's probably the criteria? Yes, Brian.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Um, I I think I'm the only one with an objection to this. I won't drone on about it, but the the waivers for sidewalks and curbs. I guess I'm just kind of curious to hear everyone else's take on it. I think. Last time I brought it up, everybody else was pretty much in support of. As it's been shown on the plan. Um, I, you know, I tend to think it was a matter of fairness for past developments that have required them and the fact that it's. An existing requirement, it kind of falls back to me in the same category as the the hardship we discussed. Like Kings Row, is there a hardship here that we're citing to grant these or are we just? Making this a cheaper development for the developer?
Well, no, we haven't gone through the waivers yet, Ryan, so those are next uh and those coming up here, so.
Okay, well, I see the motions to to grant them, so I just wanted to make sure we put that discussion, boy, I'd just like to.
You've got to read every one of those, Ryan.
Yeah, you're gonna read every one of those and every one of those gonna get is gonna get discussed, so you're 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 only half a step ahead, but so you so why don't you start right in?
All right, so pause that, replay it after we get there.
Yeah, we go.
Yeah.
I said, well, he's he's right on top of this today.
As well.
We'll let we can, we can do waivers now. So Ryan, you can begin with the first one, where.
Uh, section three fifty dash twenty one and twenty six sidewalks, which require sidewalks to be installed on both sides of the new subdivision street. And allow instead of a sidewalk to be installed, only on one side is granted.
Yeah. So um that was so what you uh you believe, so now's your time to to say what.
Well, I gotta say, you need a second first, don't you, Warren?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, well.
Second for discussion.
Okay, all right. All right, so go ahead, Ryan.
Go again, all right. So I, yeah, I guess my question is, is I for the other members of the board, I think we had a little preliminary discussion on this. Um, to me, it's, you know, one of those subdivision rules that. You know, gives some consistency to the new subdivision in towns. I think it it, you know, creates a more walkable town and. I think it I think it add value adds value, I get. On a quiet street, maybe it's not a ton of value, maybe don't both don't get used a ton, but uh I don't, I guess I'm. I'm curious what others' perspective is as to why it's of benefit to the town of North Reading to waive this requirement. Um, I I think we're in a pretty substantial housing boom right now. Property values at an all time high. I don't think profitability on the projects a big issue here. Um, I think uh attorney may have mentioned briefly, uh, you know, concerns about stormwater and impervious surface, which I think. Are valid points, although if I think if there's one place we want to. You know, create impervious surface, it would be for walkability in town, so. Uh, my perspective is is that it's not a, you know, I don't really see a good reason here to grant this, but. Uh, I'm curious to see what the other board members have to say.
Okay, anybody else want to weigh in on it before I do?
Go ahead, Warren.
Okay, you know, we actually had a count one of our previous time, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I I, yeah, I wouldn't mind chiving it a little bit. Um, you know, when we when we had talked about it in the past, um, and again, the novice here, the. Um. I'm learning as I go in terms of like the the balancing of. Uh, getting these things right for developers and, you know, us being reasonable on our demands and. Uh, encouraging development or not discouraging development, I guess. Um, but I I do agree with Ryan in the sense that. You know. The rule's set up for a reason and. From the offset, I I like the rule the way it is and I and for this development, I would prefer it to to follow those rules. From the perspective of my the the property that I live in. I I'm very curious as to why we don't have sidewalks within when our development was done. And and I'm still learning through all this stuff of. You know, I'm very appreciative of this of this conversation for this development and it makes me think like. What was the conversation when my neighborhood was being done? And unless there is a hardship, I mean, I I I would be inclined to kind of think the way that Ryan is. Um, as a as somebody who's living through the consequences of sidewalks not being considered. Um, for the for their property, so I just throw that out there for uh, you know, for conversation fodder, but. Uh, I'm very curious from the people you warn who have that experience of over the years, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, that's good. Um, so. We actually had a town engineer that came in and tried to convince us never to put sidewalks on both sides again. And um and he actually showed us uh at the time, so when Steve was the uh our 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 um.
I'm an engineer.
Engineer, yeah, he uh our town engineer. And the problem is, and you can see the problem if you drive around town with with some of the subdivisions that did have sidewalks on both sides, they're in major disrepair. Uh, so what happens is nobody walks on them. And you drive and I and I just. Even. In the middle of the summer, you drive through all the so all these bigger subdivisions and see all the people out walking their dogs. They are not on the sidewalk. They're all in the street. So the sidewalks are good to have. You should have at least a sidewalk on one side so kids can get back and forth to bus stops and things like that. But we don't, but every time you create infrastructure, you create a situation that's going to have to be fixed later on. And. You don't, you don't have to go very far to find a lot of places where the sidewalks are so bad. That nobody walks on them anymore, so. Um, that was the original thought was what why should we be creating infrastructure that we can't afford to fix? And does is there enough? So again, we're back to the value thing, right? Is the value, is there enough value in a second sidewalk to say to the people later on, listen, we're gonna put two sidewalks and fix them both. In twenty years, you know what I mean? Um, and that was kind of the concept. If there was. In a in a subdivision where everything's kind of captured inside there where you're not really. Subject to uh um people cutting through it to get from point A to point B. You know, if you if you had one, I'm trying to think of a subdivision, uh, well, a lot like Harold Parker Estates are are but. Where they put sidewalks on both sides because people cut through there, so you really don't want people trying to cross the street in there. That was the concept. It is one of the places where most of the people walk in the street, however, but um. In a subdivision like this, you know, where everything is, where where you're not going to have that cut through, you're not having that heavy traffic, other than people who live there. Who are more likely to be careful with their neighbors. Creating infrastructure that we are gonna have to replace. Uh, isn't always a great idea, but that was the concept anyway, that it was enough safety in a single sidewalk. And the lack of additional infrastructure, and then sometimes what we would do is get them to give us an offsite for it. If we're not going to put the sidewalk there, can we put it along the street someplace where there isn't any sidewalk?
Right.
So.
So.
So we get. Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
So I I do agree with Warren, you know, um, seeing all those. Spots where there are sidewalks on both sides of the street. And they're walking in the street. The kids walk on the sidewalks sometimes, but a lot of times they walk in the middle of the street also. I have a sidewalk right here on Swan Pond. It's a dead end road. We have one sidewalk. On one side of the street. Almost nobody walks on it. I walk on it when I go down the down the street because. I don't have to worry about where I'm walking when I'm walking on the sidewalk and we clear it in the wintertime so people can walk on it. But most of these sidewalks, unless there's a school. Within a mile walking, they're not cleaning that sidewalk, so it's all full of snow. And people probably, the other thing is people park on them. Um, they they figure a way out, they pull up on a driveway and they park on it, even when there's vertical granite curbing. Um, so. That that's that's kind of um my take. I do like sidewalks. Um, all four sidewalks. There's not a sidewalk on Chestnut Street or Flint Street. I don't even know if there's room to put a sidewalk on Flint Street. Because of the way the the layout is, it's so old. And Chestnut Street, it's. And Chestnut Street, it's looking pretty tight on Chestnut Street to put a sidewalk in there. Um, we might be able to sneak one in on one side, not on both. So.
Yeah, I think that's a fortunate thing for, for me is that like. You know, I, 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 I go back to my original position on this topic in that. It doesn't seem reasonable to me to require. A sidewalk on both sides of the street for this particular, you know, subdivision, I mean, it's, it's an in, internal setup. It's really just waste. Um, however, there's something to be said for consistency, and again, that point of hardship, and, you know, there. And I, I don't want to burden this developer with the bigger issues of our community. But I think that we have to view this from the bigger perspective of. Walkability is an issue in our town. And there are the streets that honestly need the sidewalks the most, don't seem to have them. Uh, the ones that have the, the ones that have the more traffic, et cetera. Um, including in front of my house, uh, I have a personal stake in this.
You're right on Marblehead Street, right?
Yeah, you know, so it's, it's one of those where I just want us to be consistent when it comes to. Sidewalk expectations for developers, and for this particular project, I, I wouldn't go back on my position, I'm fine with my original position. That one side of the street is fine for this kinda, uh, development, but. Um, I'm just curious of the history of our decisions as to why other developments weren't, weren't. Encouraged or forced to have sidewalks now. Again, I'm not gonna burden this development with that kinda issue, I'm still learning through all this stuff, but. That's why I don't change my position, but.
Find plenty of, of, of the, the subdivisions, dead end ones that have sidewalks and only one side, which is. So. Yes.
This one thing I'd like to add is when the subdivision control bylaw was drawn up. Waiving us a sidewalk on one side is easy, if there are no sidewalks at all on the street. Then you can't add it in there. But taking one away in the right streets is, is something that we can do. Um, because the developer sees what he's got going on. And he's right, right in black and white, he knows he's gonna either ask for a waiver or he's gonna put sidewalks on both sides of the street. And we may ask him to take one off just because it's not necessary, it's a. It's a five hundred foot long dead end road that needs sidewalk on one side. Um, but if it's not in the subdivision control bylaw upfront, it's kinda hard to put it in later on. That's some of the history there.
Okay, um, so, um. Does that explain more to you, Ryan, about why, why, uh, although your, your point is obviously well taken, so.
Yeah, no, I don't, I, I think those are all good points, I, I think I still maintain my original position, I think if it's. What's written in the, in the section three fifty dash twenty-one and twenty-six, then it should be upheld unless there's a hardship, or at the very least, I think, you know. This board should, you know. Uh, at least require some, something else in lieu of, I, I think, Warren, you mentioned previously doing it on the adjacent street to. Provide connectivity or something like that, or, I don't know, I just think that, you know, giving away this requirement without a real hardship is, is a bad precedent.
Well, some of the, uh, the street, the, the sidewalk that we have down Havel Street here that just got done not too long ago. That was partially funded by a developer who didn't, who put a sidewalk on only one side, and we, and the money to put this, the rest of the sidewalk in was used. To do the engineering for the sidewalk that we ended up on Havel Street where we really needed. So. And it's still a situation for, uh, for Havel, for Marblehead Street, that sidewalk was down to, that goes from the hood school down to, uh. Down to, uh, Little Meadow.
Just shy of my house. Back when they built Marblehead Street, though, it was horse and buggy. And an, and occasional car.
Yeah, luckily you don't have to go too far to get to a, uh, a sidewalk, but I mean, you know, but, 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 you know. Trying to piece them together has really been the difficult part, when, when they were not considered at first and then coming from behind trying to put, put them in. That's, that's really, uh, that's really it, so.
But I, but I find it interesting, though, that, that, that there has been bargaining in the past of, you know, we have a requirement. There's a, an investment required to meet that requirement. Um, and if we can shift those funds away to other parts of town where the need the sidewalks. I, I am in support of exploring that. I mean, because again, I, 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 I have to speak up for my neighborhood. And, you know, I, I'm happy, I'm happy that the sidewalk got as far as it did. But I'm on a curvy S curve of a road, where every time I pull into my driveway, I have to worry about the traffic. Let alone taking the dog or my baby out for a walk, so if we're, we're, we're haggling about a neighborhood getting two sidewalks. And I'm like, what we do for one? You know, so if there's, if, 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 so if there are ways. I, 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 you know, I mean, I don't wanna put it on this developer to have to fund. Something that should have been done in my neighborhood back in the day, but if we have requirements and there's not a hardship. Hey, that's the bargain.
Yeah. Uh, cuz we do, we have, uh, what we call the sidewalk funds that we have people just make donations to, and we will use it for things like this. But we've, uh, we've always valued it in some, some respects to, uh. Um, about what, what that would be, and then we've used it to. Put sidewalks other places, or to do what we could with it. Is that still an active fund, Danielle?
It is. I mean, we have it.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, we could consider putting a donation back into that again.
Yeah. But I don't know, who was it that determined in the past the values, though, Chris, was it, uh?
Bob Rogers did originally. And then it carried on, and it was twenty-five, I thought, per. If I'm not mistaken. Per a lot. I think.
For a lot.
Yeah. It's a lot of lots here. It's thirteen of them as, as I count, right?
Measure that by the cost of the, of the sidewalk being. Because I've never had a pay it before in the town, but twenty-five hundred a lot is.
Well, so you gotta, you gotta remember when a developer puts a sidewalk in, it's a whole lot less money than when the town puts the sidewalk in.
The, the thing is, if we put it in, it costs a certain amount, so it's supposed, the linkage concept is supposed to be directly related to the benefit being received.
We didn't, we didn't get, we didn't get that, I don't think we got that much for.
All right, I'm not, I'm not sure, it's been a long time, we could look it up.
I think what we got was we got a flat fee of some kind for it, because I think that's, that's what we got when we did that, uh. When we did the Havel Street, we got a flat fee and it was enough money to do with cover the engineering, it was not.
That wasn't, that was, that came out, I wrote that check, Warren, that came out of the sidewalk fund.
Yeah.
The, the money, and that was over, that was more than one developer.
Yeah.
That, that paid for that, Debbie might, Debbie might remember what it is.
I think it was thirteen thousand or something like that, thirteen thousand. I can't remember per lot, I know it was per lot, I think the way that you'd used to do it. But I think that for a Marblehead Street, it came out to like thirteen thousand something.
Was that for Bradford Pond Estates?
Yes.
Oh, I can tell you that, I have it. Eight with thirty-two lots.
Yes, that was the last one, I think we, we had this.
And that, yeah, and that we got the sidewalk out of it.
Yeah, you haven't done anything since then.
Right.
Yeah, because I know that the last few I've done, there's been a waiver, um, but no compensation, you know, relative. I mean, I will add, just, we are gonna do something to improve like the, the, the. Surrounding property, but I don't, I mean, I, look, I don't know what you want, but I do know that. It's usually, in my experience through towns, you usually base it on, and Warren, you may know this answer, a square foot cost. For going down and putting it in, because we know how long the road is, we know how big the, the drive.
Yeah. A good, a good contractor could put a, a lot of sidewalk in in a day. You know, I got to do the prep work, and then the hot top guys just roll right through it, so.
Oh, yeah, that's a day, that's a day's work for them, it doesn't take them long at all.
Yeah, so I think that's why, that's why thirteen thousand for thirty-two lots, that, that's not very much money per lot, so.
No, but I, it, I'm looking.
Yeah, but you gotta remember, they also gave up a forty B lot too, Warren.
Yeah.
You did request that two thirty-nine north, uh, is it two thirty-nine north? Um, they, they're putting the sidewalk in, but they didn't give us money to put in the sidewalk fund because they're going to do it themselves.
They're doing it themselves, and there's a certain amount of sidewalk they have to put in for that.
Right. I mean, Dave, you wanna chime in, I don't know that you really wanna put in sidewalk anywhere, I don't know that you're set up to do that.
Uh, um, yeah, I don't know, I, I'm just listening, um, you know, whatever the board decides is what we do.
Okay, you can put it in if they chose to do that, I didn't know.
You know, I don't know if that originally had looked at it that way, um. It se- seemed like that waiver was something that was, uh, looking positive as far as being, uh, waived, but, um. Whatever you guys decide. That would have to look at it.
Well, see, every one of these subdivisions is a little different in one way or another. Like this one connects two major roads as opposed to, um. Goes into a dead end or to a cul-de-sac, as opposed to one that goes into a cul-de-sac, but it has a road that goes off to one side. Who cul-de-sac or feeds off a, a pass-through road, I mean, every, every, every single one is, has their own special. Um, thing about the way they're, they're constructed, so. This one does have the, will have the ability where you could actually cut through, but I don't see that happening, which is why I was okay. With the single sidewalk, but, but sidewalks are a biggie deal for us, and so. Do, do we wanna try to figure out a, a, a number for this, uh, you know, something?
I Googled it. I don't know how appropriate that is, but I Googled it, and the cost range from seven to thirteen dollars a square foot, it says.
Yeah.
All right, so we need to know what the square footage would be, five times, what's the linear footage of the street, do you know that?
Oh, after, I, I, I should, but it's gotta be five hundred and something, cuz we didn't need a waiver for length. Um, I apologize, Danielle, do you know that?
You don't, um.
It'll take me just a second to figure it out, one sec, cuz it's right on the front page. I'm sorry, I should have that at my fingertips.
That's all right. It's not every day we ask a lawyer that question, where's your engineer?
I, I know. I know, damn him.
The engineer would know that number right off.
Oh, and in the second, in an absolute heartbeat, right? Well, I can tell you, it's, it's two point one seven acres, how's that? Oh, dear God, where is the?
You could use that number.
You could use that number.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know that.
Well, yes and no, you can, it's, it's, it's a difficult, you can't really do that.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, I can, one sec, let's just, I can measure.
Oh, I was gonna get square feet, but that's, you need linear feet.
Yeah, I mean, it should be on the front page, but.
Yeah, you're not gonna get.
Oh, you know what, though, in my narrative, I bet money that I put it in there, so here we go, let's look at my narrative.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be five hundred and some odd feet long.
Oh, because it is, it is longer, wait a second. Through street, it's one, it's, it is long, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two feet. Um, I, it cuts through, remember?
That's, that's eighty-six hundred square feet of, of sidewalk.
Can I just, um, I'm not sure unless I look at the book with my, um, the accounts, but for Bradford Pond, I think they paid us. The first half of thirteen thousand five hundred, and they had to give us the second half, so I might be.
But then they put the sidewalk in also?
I'm not absolutely sure.
Um, there were two payments.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm trying to think if maybe they put thirteen five down, and then they had to give us another thirteen five at the end.
Pretty quickly, if you want me to, I don't know if it's relevant, um.
So, Joe, what was?
And I know that's not right.
No, I think it was thirteen five plus thirteen five or something.
Yeah. But that's for thirty-two lots, right?
Yeah.
We have.
How long ago was that?
Uh, that was.
Oh, I can look it up again, I, I have it right here, one sec, it was a while ago.
It was approved before me, so.
Here it is.
It was finished during your time, though, Danielle.
Yes, yeah, but it lasted a long time, Little Meadow Way. Two thousand ten.
Yeah, it's twenty, twelve years.
Yep, God, I'm getting old, yep.
You are. I was, I was sitting on the board way before that, too. And Warren's, and Warren's got more years on it than me. Maybe it was, was it, was only five hundred a lot? Back in the day?
Find out.
Now, it, well, if I take the twenty-six thousand, which is what we got, divided by the thirty-two, it's eight hundred and twelve dollars a lot. Eight hundred and twelve.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, so, I mean, so if you were looking at a thousand dollars a lot. And you got, how many lots is?
Thirteen.
That'd be thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I mean.
I think where we started, didn't that where we started?
I have no, I, no, it was thirteen something a lot, so, um, I mean, Dave.
I said twenty-five hundred a lot, so.
Oh, there you go, Dave, we're looking at, you know, having a compensatory payment in order to put it in the sidewalk fund to address the concerns of Mr. Carroll, and also. You know, the reasonable concerns of Jeremiah, you, you get a waiver, you don't have to put it in. The cost is a thousand a lot, so it's a thirteen thousand dollar payment. Okay, all right.
You know, and it's, you also gotta remember that we've got one more waiver, and we don't, it's usually one thing that we do.
No, I agree, and we. And Mr. Carroll asked why we're doing the curbing, that's literally so that we can do low impact development, if we put curbing in. That's.
Right, no, and I understand that, and it's like, uh, number three, you already asked us, and we said, okay, and that, that was take the grass wheels away across the crossings.
Yeah, only, yeah, to minimize the.
And, 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 but you're putting vertical granite curb there.
Yeah, we are.
Which is good, because now that's slowing the car down, that's what, the vertical granite curb is to keep, it helps with plowing.
Yep.
Because the plows can follow that, not destroy it, it also helps keep people alive. With cars jumping curbs, doesn't too much for the truck, because their tires are so big. But cars, it, it, it hopefully stops a car from jumping that curb.
And that's like the compensation for that, I get you.
You know.
So if we do, if we, um, if we do that, Brian, there's, um, some money in the sidewalk fund that we can work in putting a sidewalk. We can start looking for a good place to put that. I mean, it, I mean. This is how we have a lot of the sidewalks that we have now that never had sidewalks. So it's a, it's a worthwhile, it's a worthwhile thing to do, so.
Yep.
So, um, so I guess what we do is modify that motion to say. That to reflect that payment, um, in lieu of, uh.
Yes, we had that problem before, Danielle, so when would.
We've done what a third, a third, and a third, Danielle?
Um, for Bradford Pond, it was thirteen thousand five hundred had been, um. Due after the fifth building permit for the subdivision has been applied for. Um, and then there was a final payment of thirteen five, which was supposed to be, um, when the last building permit for the subdivision was applied for, but. Um, for some reason, I think that happened like last year or something.
Yeah.
Remember, also, it was because we sold lots, and that's, there was that issue.
Yeah.
So what we can't, so if we don't. I'm, I'm, I'm actually, if we don't build the home, the building permit doesn't work.
Yeah, you're right, I think maybe before lot release.
Yes.
Does that work?
I think that's what we have to do.
Time that we really have full control of the subdivision.
You had trouble with that, Danielle, I remember.
Yeah.
And, and we talked about it, and I think lot release seems to work, cuz we still have control. And if they don't pay their, their dues, then they can't get their lot released to them. And if they sell a lot outright, or if they build on it, that's how they're making their, their, their cash infusion comes from.
And we agree to that, because then we can track it better, because when there's like an amorphous reason, it's hard for us to track it. And Danielle and I have this issue, so that's why I say, it's good, do it with the releases, cuz we know, I'll put the language in, it'll be easy.
All right, so it'll be the, with, before the first release, if that works, cuz otherwise. All right, so it'll be the, with, before the first release, if that works, because otherwise.
Give how much before the first release, half and then?
Um. Do you want to do half before the first release and half before?
The seventh release.
Seventh, okay.
So seven.
Half strong.
Because that's, that's half, that's about half of the subdivision.
Yeah, Dave, you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, that, that's, that'll be manageable, and I'll work it in, or we'll work on it tomorrow and get it all done, Danielle.
Okay, um, so we gotta modify your motion there, little Ryan, are you good with this?
Yes.
Okay. See, you won. No, actually, we, we've, we've done this so many times, we, we've, we've done, done, we've done this so many times, and it's been good for the town, every.
It is good for the town, absolutely. Absolutely, it's not like it, we don't see it.
Jeremiah, I don't know if we can get that sidewalk up by your house, we'll have a look.
Baby stuff. Look at the, right away, and all the other stuff.
Okay, Danielle, do you want to modify that motion for him, or do you want him to? He can just sort of move.
Um, so, or do we want to modify it by, by including in the motion what the payment amount is? Is that what we want to do? Okay.
You could, you could put it in.
You don't need to put the terms in, the terms Jill can put in.
Okay. Then I will see, let me just take a look back at that motion just for a moment.
Okay.
Um.
Well, Danielle, how about this, I have another idea.
Okay.
Why don't we, uh, table this one for now? And let's finish the other, uh, uh.
The two?
Yeah, the other two, and then we'll come back to this.
Okay, let's just, I, I don't want to forget to come back, oh, actually, I have them open, if you wanted, I mean. Oh, no, I have the motions open for the wrong meeting, so yes, let's go ahead and do exactly what you said.
You want to just add in, subject to the agreed conditions?
Yeah, you can say that, there you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
It's a very section.
Yeah.
All right. Three fifty dash twenty-one and twenty-six sidewalks, which requires the sidewalks to be installed on both sides of the new subdivision street. And allow instead a sidewalk to be installed only on one side, subject to the agreed conditions is granted.
Second.
Okay, good. And, uh, I have a motion in a second, so I will, uh, look for, uh, a vote, Jeremiah.
Hi.
And Krista.
Hi.
And Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
And I am I also. All right, thank you, uh, next one.
Section three fifty dash twenty-seven curbs and berms, which requires curbing and allowing instead country drainage and no curbing.
Yeah, we want the country drainage there because of the way that is, so, uh, uh, does anybody have any questions on that?
No, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, yeah, look, I'm sorry, Warren, let me just, I, I kind of have the same comment here, to be honest with you, so, again, you know, Chris's point about the value with the plowing and. Overall road maintenance, again, I, I, I just, I, I don't follow the allowing the country drainage in these subdivisions.
Well, this is again, something that we've done in the past, in a, in a situation where it proves to be the best way to do it. So.
Can you elaborate on that, why, why it's preferential here?
Well. I think because of the topography of this, I, I believe is why we were looking at it this way. To, um, um. Because when you start collecting it, and then you have to have, you have to have the ability to get it to a place to dispose of it otherwise. Right now, with country drainage, it takes, it's normal, it, 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 uh, dissipates the way it would under the existing conditions. So we've done that a number of, that, that rode out behind Lawrence Road, out behind the few number of places where we've gone with the country drainage, because it was the best. And also, there, there's less, again, there's less infrastructure for maintenance. The town doesn't have to keep going in with the bucket truck and cleaning the catch basins, you know, I mean, there's, 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 there's advantages in the maintenance to a, um. To a, um, country drainage is called low, is, is low impact drainage, that's what it's called. Because it doesn't, uh, require all that, a bunch of maintenance.
Yeah. So in, in past developments, when it's been required per the bylaw, the trade-off presumably would have been probably losing a buildable lot to. To be able to add that drainage infrastructure, no?
No, no. No, usually it's, um, a- again, usually it's, it's the low impact thing, it's the ability not to have a bunch of structures that you have to maintain.
Usually they put those structures, they, they put those structures on, uh. Someone's property also, Ryan, you know, it's not always just, you know, in, in a right-of-way area, they, we get it accessed by easement. Some of those structures, they're actually, someone's paying taxes on the property, they can't use it.
I, I guess I just struggle with why we have a bylaw that we just circumvent, because we like doing it different way better, then why aren't we changing the, the bylaw instead of just circumventing it every turn?
Well, we don't really, uh, in, in, there, there are plenty of subdivisions, you'll, where you'll find, uh, none of these, none of these waivers. Uh, because it's, it's, uh, pertinent, and it's, uh, practical to apply them all. So it's, it's more, it's a, it's a situation where you have one where, where it makes sense to go to low impact development, where it just makes sense. And so you do it, I mean, that's what we've done in the past. Um, and yet, you get a, 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 a fully developed subdivision like Shea Lane, for example, and, and we need all the infrastructure because of the. Grade changes and everything, you need every bit of the infrastructure, so there's no waivers on that. So that, not the case in this one.
It's also been, uh, the low impact has been more proven over the few, the last few years, that it does function properly and protect other, you know. Protect people's homes and, and, uh, their pro, other properties.
Yeah, because it basically emulates the existing conditions to some extent, which is, which is always good, so. Okay, so, uh, I have a motion and a second, I have a second on that, or?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, you second it? Okay, Jeremiah, how say you?
Uh, I.
And Chris Hayden?
Hi.
And Ryan Carroll?
Day.
No? Okay, and I'll say hi, so we have three eyes and then, and a no, so.
Passes.
So, but it still passes. And, uh, if you would please, Ryan, the next one.
Mr. Pierce, section three fifty dash twenty-eight grass plots, which requires a glass, grass plot between the pavement and the sidewalk areas, and instead. Wavey grass plot along the sidewalk in the area adjacent to the wetland filling area is granted.
Second.
Yeah, and that's again, to provide for the drainage, the low impact drainage. Same situation, so, any questions or comments on that? Okay, uh, Jeremiah?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna defer to your guys' experience on this one, and, and go with the, go with the group, I'll say hi.
Okay, and Chris Hayden?
Hi.
And Ryan Carroll?
Hi.
And myself is I. So there are, that, that's all our waivers.
Okay, thank you.
Except for that first one, we have to, oh no, Brian did it, I'm sorry. Yeah, Ryan did it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so now we're down to just the, the draft conditional approval, and Jill, you said you went through, and you're okay with it, you have no changes or issues?
We are, we're fine, Mr. Jameson agreed to the conditions, so it is in a condition that we think is acceptable.
Okay, Danielle, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to mention that, um, yesterday I went through everything again with, uh, Dave Giangrande, and he actually sat down with the peer review engineers who had worked on this, and, um, just wanted to confirm that. He was, um, satisfied with the way everything was done, and I only asked him that kind of as a last, um, check because of some issues we've had with, with other. You know, previous subdivisions and concerns about drainage and neighbor, and impacts to neighbors, so. Really asked that he go through it again, he, he was happy with everything, um, you know. Mentioned those few conditions that were added, and, um, that are already reflected in the conditional approval.
Okay, good. Okay, so, um. If you, if, if I may have you, Ryan, do the, uh, for the conditional approval? As amended, as amended this evening.
This evening, okay. So Mr. Pierce, I move the community planning commission vote to approve the plan entitled definitive subdivision in notice of intent of plans, Coplea Estates. Thirty-nine Chestnut and Six Flint Street, North Reading Mass, zero one eight six four, map fifty-six parcel seventy-four and eighty. Dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, last revised February fourth, twenty twenty-two. Drawn by ASP Design Group LLC, subject to the terms and conditions of the certificate of conditional approval. Dated March first, as amended this evening.
Did I make one comment that it was a, it's nine Flint?
It's also called. It's also called Cranberry Meadows, and I don't know if there was a revision date.
It is February fourth. Twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, we had that in there.
And I apologize, the engineer kept using six Flint, but it's nine, he just transposed it, I don't know how you transpose it upside down, but. Sorry for the interruption.
I have a motion, I have a motion in a second, and, uh, so I will ask Jeremiah, how say you?
Hi.
And Chris Hayden?
Hi.
And Ryan Carroll?
Hi.
And myself is I, so, uh, there's your approval.
Thank you.
And, um.
I appreciate it.
We, you really look forward to working with you to make sure everything works good.
Yep.
So, um, and let us know if there are any issues.
Appreciate it, and Danielle, we will touch base again tomorrow.
Yes.
Um, everyone.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, wait, Debbie has something.
Um, okay. Just, um, uh, Jill, I need to get at least one Mylar, one set of paper copies of the plan to be signed.
One in one?
Well, we haven't done the endorsement yet, so when we're ready for the plans to be endorsed.
Mm-hmm.
After the appeal period runs and the town clerk can certify it, then at that point, we usually get the Mylar, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna, once we do this, then the, after the appeal period expires, typically I'll deliver to you, um, but I'll give you the, the plan so that you can tell me if you like it, don't like it, and I'll make changes. Because I do have to put all the conditions on.
Yeah, make sure you got my twelve feet on there for those, for those driveways.
App, one hundred percent, I have it written down.
Yeah, there are a few notes that'll be changed on the, on.
Yeah, tomorrow Danielle and I will go through everything and make sure it's perfect.
Yep.
I think, I think Debbie was just trying to make sure she didn't get too much stuff that we don't need for the final sign.
Yeah, because I think you asked for three in, in the record somewhere, so I.
Yeah, we don't need three.
Yeah.
We just really need. No, sorry, but Debbie, go ahead.
Um, unless you want a copy of the, uh, paper copy signed by the planning board, then you would give me two sets of paper and one Mylar.
Um, Dave, do you have any desire for that, or I can just make copies, you know? You, do you have any desire, Dave, to get paper copies of the signed?
No, you know what, original signatures.
Yeah, that's crazy, you know what, I can make copies, no, let's not, let's not add more paper, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and we're gonna get, we're gonna get a, uh, uh, electronic copy of it anyways, right?
One hundred percent.
Yeah.
I, I usually make electronic copies after they're signed, and then after they're recorded.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. Whatever you, whatever you need, Debbie.
That's just a Mylar and a paper copy for us to keep.
Okay.
And then later in the process, we get, um, the electronic file, whether it's a CAD file or whatever format it is, so our G I S coordinator can put it into the, the town system, but that. That can happen, actually, no, that happens before endorsement. Yeah.
Pardon?
I think that happens before the plan endorsement, it's, it's among the, it's in the list.
Yeah, it, it says, it says give you CAD, because in that list, Debbie's right, it does say three cop, three papers, so.
You're right, and we don't, we know.
Okay, I got you.
It's a lot of paper to sign.
There you go, that's the real thing, I know.
Four copies, and, uh, you know, if there are thirty or forty sheets in there, times four, that's a lot.
And it's just as easy, and it's just as easy for me to just make copies of Mylar, it really is.
Yeah. So it's like an original.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um.
Perfect, all right, have a good evening, and I will see you soon.
Okay, good.
Take care.
Yeah, bye bye.
Thank you, David.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, um. I see, Mr. Richard Johnson, do you have a comment or a question, sir?
No, I was just, I was, I was interested in hearing about the development going on at, uh. The Questwood Estate.
Yeah, we just finished with that, so.
Okay, well, those are what I was interested in.
Okay, well, um, okay, well, we just finished going through that, so it's all, it's all set for now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so, uh, we, I think that's it for us for tonight, Danielle, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
I, I do.
Okay.
Again, sorry.
You need signatures, Debbie?
I need signatures, so, um, I need signatures on some invoices, some payroll. Uh, some other correspondence, and I have about six sets of minutes now, Ryan.
I'm coming for you, Debbie, I keep forgetting, oh.
I'm, I'm going to start texting you, you're not gonna like it, ask Warren and.
Give it to me, I deserve it, Debbie. I'll be, I apologize.
I will see you soon.
You will. Hey Debbie, is it gonna be ready tomorrow afternoon? I can stop in tomorrow afternoon to sign stuff.
Yes, I'm gonna do it in the morning.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll come by tomorrow, Debbie, at some point, and take care of those.
Okay. Thank you, I need three, uh. Yeah, no, that, that should be good, okay.
If Ryan shows up, then you'll get your third one right there.
I will get my, yes.
I'll be, I will be there, I'll be.
Thank you.
Just got called out.
Yeah, and thank you guys for your input, I mean, it does, it does matter, makes us think about everything that we do.
Yeah.
When you, when you bring everything up, so the more we think about it, the better decisions we make in most cases, so, it's all good. So, all right, uh, so thanks to all for coming to me, and I have, I'll have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Bye.
Take care, everybody.